This year when he was hurt, so they can still find a way they believe. But you know, Golden State is healthy. Stephen Curry got healthy late in the year, Draymond Green, Klay Thompson. They have all their best players right now and they're going to be tough to beat.
Well, from basketball now to cycling and the teams and riders of the Giro d'Italia have arrived in Sicily before Tuesday's fourth stage of the Grand Tour event. Mattia van der Poel of the Netherlands currently holds the overall race leader's pink jersey. And the BBC's Matt Warwick has more details.
A race famed for its drama during the opening stages. This year, the Giro has been simmering nicely, but that could be about to change as the challenge turns to climbing on stage four, up a volcano, no less. One thing that will change is who wears pink as van der Poel should make way for wiry, lighter riders who will grind their way up to Mount Etna. Britain's Simon Yates and Ecuador's Richard Carapaz are the most prominent in a throng of talent who could capitalize along the 172 kilometer course. Given the three and a half thousand meters of altitude gain, it's here this race threatens to erupt.
Sounds like hard work ahead. Matt Warwick there on the Giro d'Italia cycling. That's where we end this edition of World Sport from the BBC. Thanks for listening.
You're listening to the BBC World Service, where Alan Dean returns with a new series of Don't Log Off.
It all began with a call out on social media saying, "Talk to me." And for 10 years, I've been recording the conversations with the strangers who replied.
There will be discrimination and I can't avoid that.
Some have become digital friends.
Hello?
It's lovely to hear your voice. It's been so long. In episode one of a new series, I catch up with Daria in war-torn Ukraine.
Our door and windows shook.
Good evening. Welcome to the third and final night of segment A of the Belmont's 2022 annual town meeting. We have a quorum, so I will call the meeting to order. As we do all meetings, I will begin with a pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now we'll attest our devices as we do and establish that we have a quorum. And I want to be clear about something. When we come into the meeting, before the meeting officially begins, we we vote with this same slide, but those votes do not carry over to the meeting. So you need to vote again in order to make sure that your voting is working. And I want to thank Paul Richter for highlighting this. There had been. So go ahead and and vote. All right, let's close the poll and. So we have more than 200 people, just slightly more than 200. So we're all set to go unless anybody has any issues. I can scroll this briefly. Mary. Mary Gavin, go ahead. Elaine Allagood, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I'm here. I had a problem getting in with my password, but I'm all set now. Just wanted to let you know I am here.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Brian Cushman, the town clerk. I'm just busting in to remind all town meeting members. If you're having a problem with your technology, please feel free to call the tech team. They are waiting your calls. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll next, we'll now move to the town clerk who will administer the oath of office if there are any new or newly re-elected town meeting members who were not able to take the oath at the meetings last week. So Ellen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the town clerk. If you are a new or re-elected town meeting member who has not yet taken the oath, do you solemnly affirm that you will uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the bylaws of the town of Belmont and impartially perform the duties as a town meeting member, a position to which you have been duly elected, keeping uppermost in your mind what is best for the town of Belmont and its inhabitants? If you agree, please vote yes on the next slide when polling is open.
So I think we can close the polling now. And thank you all of you for taking the oath. We now move to moderator's remarks as I do before each meeting. If we could have the next slide. So first I would like to have a moment of remembrance for Gerard Nataoli. Mr. Nataoli was a realtor in Belmont for decades. Whole generations of people knew him in that capacity. But he was also a long-term town meeting member, serving for 42 years from 1971 to 2013. And he passed away in 2021. And so I would just like to recognize his contributions to Belmont over all those years with a moment of silence. Thank you. Terms of the logistics tonight, admitting to the floor two additional people, Julie Wu and Chantelle Washington. In terms of tonight's agenda, we really, we only have, as you know, beyond Article One, two articles. Under Article One, we will have one report and we'll hear from that report shortly. Of the two articles, Articles 11 and 12, both citizen petitions. Terms of Article 12, Mr. McGaw, representing his petitioners, will move to dismiss the petition. So that will leave us really with only one item of business, Article 11. So I'm hoping we can complete our action on the early side. And then, as you know, we resume Segment B of Town Meeting on June 1. In terms of resuming Town Meeting in June, the question that obviously is on many people's minds, certainly mine, is whether we continue to meet virtually or whether we meet in person. And I prepared an email to Town Meeting members that I will send tomorrow morning. But it's a but I would like to read the email tonight to explain my decision and the reasoning. "I had fervently hoped that we could return to in-person meetings for Segment B of our annual town meeting in June. Although we've succeeded in conducting important work through virtual meetings, the absence of meeting in person deprives members of a shared sense of responsibility and camaraderie that Zoom makes difficult. However, I do not believe I can vouch for the public safety of some 300 individuals meeting in a closed space for four hours over four nights. As moderator, I must place a high priority on ensuring the public health and safety of all town meeting members. In anticipation of making this decision, I met with the Chair of the Belmont Board of Health and Director of the Health Department, who have strongly recommended that we not meet in person. In addition, the Board of Health at its meeting this evening, May 9, voted unanimously to recommend that the June Town Meeting be held remotely. Last Thursday, the state reported the highest daily count of COVID virus cases since February 3, three months ago, with a daily positive rate of 6.17% compared to only 1.6% a few weeks ago. The vast majority of Town Meeting members undoubtedly feel safe to meet in person. However, unlike choosing to go to the theater or out to eat in a crowded restaurant, Town Meeting is not voluntary. Town employees and Town Meeting members are required to attend by virtue of their employment or civic obligation. Some fraction of the 300 are immunocompromised or who have family members who are. In addition, Belmont has an unusually large Town Meeting body and relatively limited auditorium gathering spaces, which does not offer the opportunity for adequate spacing between individuals. Under these circumstances, neither I nor Belmont Health officials feel it is safe to return to in-person Town Meetings. I have heard from Town Meeting members who feel passionately that we should meet in person and others who feel passionately that we should not. Like many of you, I am very disappointed that we cannot yet return to a traditional Town Meeting, but I must follow my conscience and the advice of health officials. The legislation enabling towns with representative Town Meetings like Belmont's to meet virtually, that legislation expires in July. So we fully anticipate to return to in-person Town Meetings in the near future. We are off to a great start of Town Meeting season and look forward to productive Segment B. I thank you for your understanding. Thank you. And with that, I will turn to the town clerk, who will read the warrant and describe procedures for this evening's meeting. Ellen.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the town clerk. I, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, Town Clerk, do hereby certify that I gave notice of the adjourned session of the annual town meeting, held by remote access on May 4, 2022, by posting an attested copy of the notice of adjournment on the town clerk's official bulletin board in the town hall, on the town website, and at least five other places in town, giving notice that the annual Town Meeting had not yet been completed and had been adjourned to meet today, May 9, 2022, by remote access, beginning at 6:30 PM, briefly stating the business to be acted upon, all in accordance with the Representative Town Meeting Acts of 1926 as amended and Section 30-110(c) of the General Bylaws of the Town. May I continue, Mr. Moderator? Thank you and good evening and welcome back to Night Three of Belmont's Annual Town Meeting. Moderator Mike Widmer has again asked me to review just a few key points regarding the technology and use for tonight's remote access virtual Town Meeting. Town Meeting members who neglect to sign in on their Turning Point electronic voting accounts are not actually voting in our encrypted, secure voting system. On Friday, May 6, at 10:50 AM, and again today at 12:26 PM, I emailed all Town Meeting members to Zoom link and information, the Turning Point session ID, and a detailed instruction sheet describing how to sign in. And we hope that everyone will follow those instructions again. Town Meeting members, presenters, and some town employees are the only people in the Zoom webinar. Members of the public are welcome to watch Town Meeting on www.bellmontmedia.org or on Community Access Television, Channel 28 on Verizon, Channel 8 on Comcast. This Town Meeting is being televised on Belmont Media. For Town Meeting members who are voting at home, who are just watching the cable television broadcast, there will be a slight delay in what you see on television from the live event. But rest assured, your Turning Point device will open at the same time as everyone else's for voting. We are monitoring the delay, but we do ask you to vote as soon as the moderator opens voting to make sure you are counted. Town Meeting, excuse me, Turning Point is the only way to be given attendance credit and to vote routinely tonight. Town Meeting members needing technical support during Town Meeting should not raise their hands, but instead call the technology team at the telephone numbers I provided in my emails sent May 6 and again today. We ask all Town Meeting members to be careful to vote only after the moderator has declared that polling is open. Then please vote as soon as you can. Check your Turning Point device for the confirmation that your vote has in fact been received. The bubble for your vote choice will be filled. If no bubble is filled in and it's blank, please vote again and watch for the bubble to be filled in as confirmation of your vote. The moderator will give a fair warning when polling is about to close. In the event that a Town Meeting member cannot get their Turning Point account to record their vote, the Town Meeting member should immediately utilize our emergency vote team, which is standing by at the telephone numbers I also provided to you in my email last night, excuse me, this afternoon. Then call the technology team after that to make sure you've solved the problem before the next vote is called. Town Meeting members will not be able to share video today. Everyone will be on mute whenever not actively speaking to the Town Meeting to avoid background noise distractions. Town Meeting members who want to speak must raise their hands by clicking the raise hand icon, which is located at the bottom of the Zoom toolbar, to be recognized by the moderator. He will recognize people to speak in the order in which their hands were raised. When the moderator invites you to speak, he'll name you and then please unmute yourself. A microphone will appear at the bottom left and identify yourself by name and precinct, just as you would at the microphone if you were in a Town Meeting. Mostly that's for our court reporter to make sure that she understands and attributes your comments properly. I repeat, anyone recognized to speak, please start by saying your name and your precinct. If you are dialed into Zoom just using your telephone number, please press star nine to raise your hand and to be recognized, and then you'll join the line of those waiting. Town Meeting members who wish to make a point of order should use the Q and A tool, also located on the Zoom toolbar, by typing "point of order only." A staff person will inform the moderator immediately that you have a point of order, and the moderator will then call upon you to speak and explain. We caution you that if the moderator is already dealing with a point of order that has been made by another Town Meeting member, we will ask you to listen to the outcome of that point of order before breaking in with another one. If you do not have a microphone on your computer, please rely on the Q and A tool on the bottom Zoom toolbar. Type your full name, your precinct, and your comment, or question. A member of the Town Meeting Q and A team will let you know the name of the Town Meeting, excuse me, the Q and A team member who will be acting as your proxy. Listen for the moderator to recognize that person, who then will, on your behalf, read your question or comment exactly as you have typed it. Finally, if the moderator asks for unanimous consent and you choose not to give it, you must immediately use the raise hand function or the Q and A function to get the immediate attention of the moderator. We'll be watching again there for raised hands during the time period. And if we see any that the moderator will immediately call instead of unanimous consent, call for a vote by electronic means. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. We now turn to the preliminary vote that we take at each of these Town Meetings. I will read the motion. "Move that the Town Meeting will meet and act on all matters on the warrant for this annual Town Meeting by means of the video and audio conferencing and voting technologies described in the moderator's March 21, 2022 letter to the Select Board posted with a warrant." And as I have explained before, this is necessary to take this vote, to be sure that we have a majority support to conduct the meeting virtually. This is required by the legislation that allows for virtual meetings. So we can open the polls and vote yes if we support this, no if you do not. So we'll do a few more seconds here. We're waiting for Belmont Media. All right, let's close the polls and display the vote. Vote 238 in favor, four opposed, two abstentions. So obviously, we can continue to conduct this meeting virtually. So the final tally, 238 in favor, four opposed, two abstentions. So thank you. We now turn to the order of articles, as I mentioned. We have one report under Article One and then 11 and 12. And we will do the business of the June Segment B Town Meeting, Articles 8 and 13 to 22, not necessarily in that order. We haven't had our planning meeting to determine the order, but those are the articles that will be covered. We'll now turn to the Article One reports, the motion. "Move that Article One be taken from the table. I will accept unanimous consent." As you know, this is required in order for us to hear reports and then we put it back on the table following reports. I see no objection, so we have unanimous consent to take Article One from the table. And now I'd like to introduce two individuals who will report on the diversity efforts for the town and schools. I should say that Kimberly Haley Jackson, Chair of the Diversity Task Force, planned to present tonight, but her daughter has a serious case of COVID, so she will not be able to present. And in her place will be Julie Wu, who is a member of the task force. She will talk about the Diversity Task Force. And then Chantelle Washington will talk about the schools, the diversity efforts at the schools. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Wu. Please proceed.
Thank you. This is Julie Wu, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6, and member of the Diversity Task Force. I have been given the task of summarizing the Diversity Task Force's extensive findings and recommendations in five minutes. I will ask all of you to please refer to the Diversity Task Force tab on the town's website for the complete document. Tonight, I will be highlighting a few elements that may be of interest to Town Meeting. The Diversity Task Force was formed after numerous racial incidents, including the murder of Henry Tapia in February of 2021. The Select Board gave the task force the following charge: "Study the causes of systemic racism and stereotypes attached to race, religion, ethnicity, sexual orientation, and culture. Develop recommendations to the Select Board for steps the Belmont community can take to combat systemic racism and embrace greater diversity, equity, and inclusion in Belmont." The task force comprised representatives from various stakeholder groups in Belmont. I represented, for example, the Belmont Pan Asian Coalition. We met with other groups, town representatives and employees and local experts over the course of a year, presenting our findings and recommendations to the Select Board in March of this year. The task force found that Belmont is a vibrant, diverse community with many activists, allies, and concerned citizens, many of whom are here and have been committed to making Belmont an inclusive, welcoming community. At the same time, there has continued to be a documented increase in hate-based incidents in Belmont in the past year or so, including racist, homophobic, and anti-Semitic acts. Belmont took an important step in 2021 when the Belmont Public Schools hired its first Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Chantelle Washington. However, at all levels of Belmont's government, elected, appointed, and employed, minorities are vastly underrepresented when compared to Belmont's population. For example, 76% of Belmont's residents are Caucasian. However, 96% of municipal employees identify as Caucasian. Of the almost 100 full-time employees in Belmont's Fire and Police Departments, only one employee identifies as non-white. Similarly, Belmont students are 62% Caucasian, while school staff are 83% Caucasian. Also in the schools, the 2021 RUTHY Youth Risk Behavior Survey shows shocking rates of depression and suicidality in the middle and high schools, particularly affecting gender queer students and students of color and mixed race. I'm sure that Chantelle will be talking about this as well, but the data are particularly heartbreaking in chenery students. And you can see that 65% of gender queer middle school students have contemplated suicide and 30% of multiracial middle school students as well. The task force's town-wide The task force's townwide recommendations to address these and other issues include. To create a diversity, equity and inclusion director position for the town of Belmont. To create an ongoing DEI implementation committee or an extension of the Belmont Human Rights Commission to work with the DEI Director. To promote long term diversification of town positions by, for example, reexamining civil service. And considering continuing remote access to meetings like this one. We also had many specific recommendations to increase access for seniors and disabled residents and have more gender inclusive town facilities and policies. Under the topic of housing, the task force reported fair housing violations in the community and in the municipality, particularly in regard to residents or potential residents of color. Those with children and those with section eight housing vouchers. We recommended providing providing fair housing education to relevant town boards, town meeting members. Landlords, local real estate agents, tenants, renters, sellers and buyers. The task force recommended investigating implementation of housing discrimination testing programs. We also had many recommendations to address the lack of adequate affordable housing in Belmont. With respect to the schools, among other things, the task force recommended maintaining funding for social workers, psychologists and guidance counselors in each school to address. The shocking mental health issues elucidated in the youth risk behavior survey. The Diversity Task Force, again, thanks our many contributors. We also thank again the Select Board for the formation of the task force. Thanks to all of you for your attention. We understand that these issues are complex. This report is by no means exhaustive and this presentation certainly is not either. Thank you all for all that you have done and continue to do for our community. We look forward to working together to improve Belmont's future.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. That was a very helpful report and I want to thank you and Kimberly and the entire. Task force for their extraordinary efforts that couldn't be more important for the town of Belmont. Particularly at this moment in in our country's history. So thank you very much. And with that, we will introduce Chantel Washington. We'll talk about the Belmont Public Schools, Ms. Washington. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate this time that I have tonight to speak to all of you. Tonight I'm going to talk a little bit about our equity audit process, not in full detail. I'm really here to give folks in the community an invite to talk a little bit more about. The equity audit process that the school district underwent. And I will invite you all to speak to us in more intimate settings. To hear a little bit more from the community. So again, my name is Chantel Washington and I am excited to be here. First, I'll tell you a little bit about me and my role. I started here in September of twenty twenty one. I have previously previous experience working in higher education and various schools in Boston Public. I also sit in the central office with our superintendent, so with Superintendent. Phelan and Assistant Superintendent Darius. So we get to work together very closely to do equity work together as a district. I'm not located in any one particular school. Sometimes people get confused by that and think that I'm located at a particular school. I have the advantage to work with all of our educators, so I can float around the district. So today I wanted to tell you all that the equity audit was commissioned in the summer of twenty twenty one. A little bit before I came on board with the district and we commissioned some outside consultants to conduct that audit. And so I was able to come right in and start working with them to implement the audit and support their work. Now that the audit is completed, which was completed in March of twenty twenty two. We are entering into the next phase of our planning and so. During the March eighth, I believe, school committee meeting. The consultants that conducted the equity audit. Did a presentation there with their findings. So if you do want to hear specifically from the equity auditors, the people who. Conducted our audit, you can go on our website. We did create a DEI website. For the district. And so if you go to the main page and click the home tab. You'll scroll down a little bit and see that there's a DEI tab. And if you hit that tab, you will be able to find all of this information. We created an entire page dedicated to the equity audit work. So any of the, you know, full reports, the executive summary. And the presentation from school committee and all other updates will be on that page. So I definitely suggest everyone to check that out if you're interested in equity work in the district. And so the next phase of our work will be focused on a steering committee that was created. After the results of the equity audit. So I commissioned or I created a equity audit. The Equity Action Planning Committee and we work together. It's a mix of people. You can see here, it's a mix of people from in the town. And parents and educators in the district who have come together to prioritize. Stakeholders that we want to talk to, to get a little bit more information from them about the equity audit results. And so at this point, we're looking forward to creating some action steps. So we will be inviting community members to come together in small groups and especially students. We wanted to hear a little bit more from students and we will ask them some questions. We have a questionnaire that we created with some of the. Recommendations from the equity audit, asking the community to help us to sort of prioritize the work. There is so much that came out of the audit if you had a chance to look. And so we want to obviously, you know, address all of the issues that came out of the report. But we want to make sure that we do it in a strategic and an effective manner. And so we're going to try to prioritize. Which things we want to tackle first and when. And so we're asking the community to help us with that. So we'll be asking for that and then we'll be asking for any ideas that you all have. So for the Belmont community, if you have children in the district or not. Anyone will be welcome to attend the open session that we're going to have and that will be on May seventeenth. At twelve thirty, I'll do two different sessions and. May seventeenth at seven PM. And so the way that you can find out more information about this, one, you can email me. But also we will post on that website that I told you about, the District DEI website. We will post a Eventbrite link where you can register to attend this event. So this is the best way that I can reach out to most people in Belmont since I don't have all of your emails. And I can also share this with Ellen, the town clerk, if that's a good way for folks to find out information. But if you go to the website in the next day or so, there should be a tab there that has an invite for an Eventbrite. Eventbrite link. That's it. Thank you so much. And my email is there. Hopefully you can see it. I have a new email address, so definitely wanted to post it here, but you can always just reach out to the central office of the school district and you can find me.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. You are doing very important work and thank you for sharing an overview of that with us tonight. We're appreciative. We now turn to putting Article one on the table. Move that Article one be laid on the table. I will take unanimous consent for this routine action. Do people have their hands raised? I'm not sure if it's connection with this. Norma Maserati?
Sorry, that was an error. Apologies.
No problem. And Judy McSwain? So I guess not. We can come back to Ms. McSwain. So I, through unanimous consent article, one is laid on the table. So now we will move to Article eleven. And this is a citizen's petition presented by Joseph Bernard on behalf of the petitioners. Mr. Bernard, do you want to read the motion, please?
Yes. Joe Bernard, Town Meeting Member, Precinct three. Moved that the town vote to adopt the resolution to support changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts. As printed in the warrant for this town meeting.
Let me just get a vote of the Select Board. Mr. Palolo, Mr. Dash?
No, I'm here, Mr.
Mr. Palolo.
Yes, I am here, Mr. Whitman.
Good.
Mark, I was at a charity golf tournament today, but I'm here for town meeting. Obama Country Club is a great day. So be that be it, Mr. Whitmer. I'm Mr. Moderator, Mark Palolo, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. The Select Board recommends favorable action. I voted two to zero with one abstention.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard.
Thank you. Joe Bernard, Town Meeting Member, Precinct three. In January twenty twenty one, at the very beginning of the current state legislative session. Legislation was passed to create the special commission relative to the seal and motto of the Commonwealth. What this is, this is a nineteen member committee whose charge is to make recommendations. For a revised or new design of the seal and motto and to make recommendations for an educational program on their history and meeting. Included on this commission are six members. Who are lineal descendants of tribes within historical presence in the Commonwealth, which is important. Because this is not a new issue for indigenous people who have been saying for generations that the image on the seal is offensive and harmful. State legislation on this has been filed every session for decades and finally passed in twenty twenty one. Which is great progress that this commission has been formed and is getting to work. But it's also important at this point to recognize the work that indigenous people have done and what they've endured to get to this point. So the foremost purpose of the citizen's petition for the resolution that we're voting on tonight. Is to uplift and amplify an indigenous led campaign for change. Next slide. So Article eleven is a non binding resolution because the legislative action to adopt any changes has to be done at the state level. So you know, you might ask why it matters to have Belmont Town Meeting express our support in this way. So I want to explain two reasons why it matters. One reason has to do with the timing. The timing of the committee's creation, the work they're doing now, the deadlines for the recommendations and how that all coincides with the dates of state legislative sessions. So although the special commission was created at the beginning of the current legislative session. It took several months for the various appointing authorities like the governor to fully staff it with nineteen members. They're fully staffed now, but because of that delay at the top, at the start, the committee has already requested and received an extension on their original deadline. Until the extension is until December thirty one, twenty twenty two. And at their most recent meeting, the committee agreed to request a further extension until March thirty one, twenty twenty three. The reasoning they said was, as one committee member said, it's better to get it done right than to get it done quickly. But what all of that means is that the committee's work is going to extend beyond the legislative session that formed it. So the twenty twenty, the twenty one, twenty two session ends on January third. And then the twenty three, twenty four session begins, which means that any action on this will be taken up by a different legislative session with some number of different legislators. The special commission is charged with making recommendations, but it's really up to state legislators to decide whether and how to act on them. And it will be important for the new legislative session to know that there is public attention on the topic. And that there's an expectation of action rather than inaction. And that sort of leads into the second reason why I think Belmont's vote tonight matters. It's increasing public awareness. There's several times during the committee's meetings to date, committee members have said that. It's the great importance of public awareness and public input and they've even established and directed a subcommittee to focus on this. So our vote tonight is, you know, it's Belmont's chance to join forty four of the municipalities across the state who have already passed similar resolutions. And the more municipalities speak up on this, the louder the message to the state legislators. Next slide. So I said at the top that indigenous people have been saying for generations that this image is harmful and offensive. And I, so I just want to close my presentation with my last minute to point out specifically why. This is the current image. It portrays an arm holding a sword above the head of a native man. The illustrator of this image wrote an article in eighteen eighty five describing his process and intentions in great detail. So we know for certain that the image is deliberate depiction of violent colonization. And this image glorifies violence and brutality and is present in so many places and contexts throughout the Commonwealth. But it does not represent who we are or who we should aspire to be and it must be changed. And that's why I asked for your vote tonight in support of sending that message to our state legislators. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. We now go to discussion of the motion under Article eleven. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Melissa McIntyre.
Hi, this is Melissa McIntyre, Town Meeting Member, Precinct eight. I am rising in enthusiastic and in fact embarrassed support for this article. I am embarrassed personally that I did not know about the meaning of the state seal. Until I read about this recently and having heard about it, I cannot think of anything. To do other than to change it. And so I sincerely hope that other members of town meeting. Will join me in supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, Town Clerk. At this time, there are five people with their hands raised. The first three are Paul Looney, Michael McNamara and Andrea Mashara.
Thank you. Paul Looney, Mr. Looney, you're next.
Hi there. PJ Looney, Precinct seven, Town Meeting Member. This question is for Joe. Where's the data to support a large majority of Native Americans find the current state flag offensive? I'd just like to more data. You know, yeah, with their surveys done, with the large models done. I mean, I understand where you're getting this, but I'm just wondering how much of movement there is behind this from Native Americans. Thank you.
Mr. Bernard.
Sure. Joe Bernard, Precinct three. So PJ, I don't have any data that I can give you, certainly not on my fingertips. Indigenous leaders, I trust to have their finger on the pulse of what indigenous people across the Commonwealth feel on this issue. And this was near the top of their priorities for state legislation to get this special committee formed. And so I've spoken to indigenous leaders since starting the, or since collecting the citizen's petition. And we, there, I had arranged for one Sagamore of the Massachusetts tribe at Ponkapo to speak tonight. And fortunately he wasn't able to make it, but I hope that maybe satisfies the question about whether or not there really is support.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Michael McNamara, you're next.
Michael McNamara, Town Meeting Member, Precinct seven. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I think that something is. Something that I thought of is, I recently heard about Mississippi and recently Mississippi, which is a state very different than Massachusetts in many ways. I looked at their own flag and I looked at the history it represented, looked at the people it represented and thought, we can do better. They thought that, you know what, there's a large portion of our population, even a small portion of our population. Who, who's, who, who see this flag and don't see themselves in it. They don't see that sort of inclusive state ethos that we in Massachusetts and in other places have really tried to strive for. And I think the idea is that a lot of Native Americans, I would imagine, I'm not Native American, but I can appreciate that a lot of them may feel. As though this sort of is erasing their history. It's sort of saying that they were simply a footnote in history or, you know, talking about the atrocities committed against them. And not really focusing on their shared perseverance and their culture and their need right now. There are a lot of Native Americans throughout the United States, including Massachusetts. Who have real needs and real concerns. And I feel like the flag itself seems to almost be trivializing their experiences and sort of showing. showing a more archaic version of their history and not allowing them to sort of chart their own path because we keep on hearing in textbook or in other places sort of these anecdotes, these sort of footnotes. And it's time for us to sort of recognize the full history of the native peoples. And in sort of like Mississippi, take a look at our flag, take a look at ourselves and say, we can do better. We can do better for more inclusivity and a more welcoming place for everyone, all people in Belmont and Massachusetts as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Masari.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Andrea Masari, Precinct 5. This resolution could be one step in the right direction to at least show respect to those upon whom so many injustices were inflicted. Similarly, to how we became a welcoming community to immigrants just a few years ago, this resolution will show that Belmont respects, quote, "the redesign of the Massachusetts flag and seal to better reflect the ideals of peace, justice, and equality for all the people who now call the Commonwealth of Massachusetts home," end quote. That quote was taken from the Change the Mass Flag website. "It can only be a good thing for our state flag to represent Native Americans more respectfully rather than by a colonial broadsword suspended over the head of a Native American man." I am going to vote for this article and I hope all of you will too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman. At this time, there are seven Town Meeting Members waiting to speak. The first three are Chris Grande, Catherine Bonfiliio, and Rachel Herrler.
Thank you. Chris Grande, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sorry, Chris Grandy, Town Meeting Precinct Member, Town Meeting Precinct Number 1 Member. Definitely feel that if Native Americans are are in some way offended by this image, that should be discussed and I'm open to that and think that's a positive thing. I was just going to ask you, Joe, if you could give us more color. I did cursory research into the history of the Mass State Seal. Makes it look like the fellow in 1885 basically did a mishmash of the previous six seals. The Latin expression coming from a Dutch expression, which is simply, which was something that Paul Revere put on the Mass State Seal in the pre-revolutionary, around 1775, in order to say, by the sword, we seek, you know, we seek quiet peace by the sword. And it had nothing to, and he actually changed the seal to have a, you know, sort of a Minuteman-type person on there and had gotten rid of the Native American image at the time. So that, that expression has nothing to do with, with, with that, had more to do with revolutionary causes. And supposedly, the sword has to do with that also. And the, you know, and then originally, the the image that was sent around to Town Meeting said that this was a pacified Native American. And I had a little trouble with that too. And I look back, it's not so much that. The original Plymouth colonists had, it was more for seeking peace. And there was some reference to, you know, we come in peace and supposedly, you know, it was more of a of a religious conversion thing or, you know, spreading the faith type of thing originally. So a lot of the stuff that, a lot of the pieces to this were kind of mishmashed together and put together. And I think, you know, just so they could squeeze in a bunch of stuff from previous seals. So I'm fine with changing it. I just want to make sure that, that, that someone doesn't look at this thing and see all these images and say, this is all about attacking Native Americans. By the sword, we seek peace. That must mean we're, we're cutting Native Americans, pacify Native Americans. A lot of the language that was used to describe this was, I think, very, it was definitely very biased. So I just want to make sure that, I mean, Joe, if you can comment on that, that some of the descriptions on these things seem very biased to me. And, you know, just a cursory research into the state seals, which I guess you can go to the State House in Massachusetts and see all the previous state seals or Wikipedia and see all this previous state seals. You can get a history of what was going on and see where a lot of these images came from and came together into the current seal that we look at. In fact, they didn't even have, I don't know if they even had a copy. They didn't put the seal on documents, et cetera, in the original colony seals. So there was no image to go off of. So I suppose, you know, the fellow in 1885 using put-together Native American artifacts and things probably wasn't a good idea. But even back then, I guess they didn't want a Native American on the, on the seal, probably for different reasons. So it's always been an issue, it seems. So Joe, could you comment on just the, the, you know, just the phrasing and such? I had a little trouble with all of that. So I would appreciate any feedback.
Mr. Bernard, do you have a brief response?
Yeah, brief response. Joe Bernard, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. A few things that I will touch on. One is that before this current image, the official, the image itself was not actually enshrined in state law. There was a description of an image saying it should contain a Native American man. It should contain a star in the left corner, et cetera. But it didn't have an actual image until this one. The point I wanted to make, you're right about the Latin phrase being used in a previous seal that had a picture of a Minuteman on it. And the full Latin phrase is, by the sword, we seek peace, but peace only under liberty or freedom. And, but so two points on that. One is that the illustrator of the current seal changed the arm holding the sword to have a ruffled sleeve to reflect the time of Miles Standish. He wrote that in his article. And he wrote that he modeled it on Miles Standish's broadsword. So there is kind of, I mean, it maybe is hard for us to look back and see whether that's Miles Standish's arm or a Minuteman's arm. But the illustrator certainly knew and intended that to be a colonizer era arm, not a Revolutionary War era arm. And then the point about the downward pointed arrow is something that's also stated in the article as deliberate, that is as a sign of peace. And I read that stated elsewhere too, that a downward pointed arrow means that. And I guess putting that together with the Latin motto, it, it just begs the question of, by the sword, we seek peace. The Native American man has no sword. So who is seeking peace? But peace only under freedom. Freedom for whom? So that's, that's what I would say about.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Catherine Bonfiliio.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Catherine Bonfiliio, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. I stand in strong support of this article for all the reasons that Mr. Bernard laid out and Andrea so beautifully said just now. I would actually think that this flag should be taken down immediately. It is so offensive. In a time when we're seeing Confederate statues and flags come down in the South, I really believe that Massachusetts can do better than this. I would ask Town Meeting Members to think about what it would be like. We have, I believe, over 30,000 Indigenous peoples in this state for them to look at this flag. And if you were a child, an Indigenous child, what this would look when you're studying Massachusetts history to see this and think a little bit about what that would mean. So I am in strong support and I hope that every, the Town Meeting Members overwhelmingly support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Heller. Ms. Heller.
Yeah, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent. Rachel Heller, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I rise in strong support and thank Joe Bernard for all the work that's been put into this. It is clear that this is extremely offensive and we are hearing from Native leaders that this is not acceptable. Those two together, do it for me. Plus the fact that at this moment in history, this is a moment where we are making changes, where we are acknowledging our history and we are demonstrating, we're changing policies and demonstrating who we want to be. And I know in Massachusetts, the state that was the first to allow same-sex marriage to ensure that all people have access to healthcare. I know this is a state that cares about our people. And it's important that our flag reflect our values. So Joe, thank you for your work on this and I really look forward to the day where this is replaced with something that we can all be proud of.
Thank you, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, Town Clerk. There are now 10 people with their hands up. The first three are Cara Moran, Michael, who has no last name, and I guess we'll ask him when that comes up, and Klaus Becker.
Thank, thank you. Cara Moran, please.
Hi, Cara Moran, Precinct 8. I would just like to say that I'm a graduate of public schools in Massachusetts. I went to Algonquin Regional High School. And we had to study the history of the Massachusetts seal and the flag. And there's nothing sacred about this particular flag. We've changed the flag before. We can change it again. This reference to the Native American that's on the flag is actually a throwback to the original Native American depicted on the seal back in the 1600s. And that Native American was depicted as being naked and with a little bubble coming out in which he said, come over and help me. And so the flag has always been a representation of how we want to think about Massachusetts. At that time, it was, we want people to come over and to feel good about, you know, being a colonizer here because these people need our help, right? They need, they need the words of Christ and they need our superior technology. And we have the opportunity to, again, change the flag to be about what we think Massachusetts is and what it can be, you know. So I just wanted to, for those of you who are lovers of history, know that you're not betraying any history by thinking we should really reexamine this and we should redo it because it's been done and redone. It was a flag with a pine tree. It was, you know, it's been changed multiple times. And we should all feel comfortable entering into a discussion about whether this is really the best flag for Massachusetts or whether we can do better. Thank you.
Pardon me, I was muted. Michael, please introduce yourself. We don't have your last name.
I'm sorry about that. This is Mike Crowley, Town.
Oh, Mike Crowley, welcome.
And I'm rising in enthusiastic, enthusiastic support of the article and resolution. The flag does not reflect our values. And frankly, I just want to say really that, you know, when our symbols no longer serve us, it's time to jettison them. And in this case, it's absolutely clear that this is a non-welcoming symbol that doesn't represent us here in Belmont. It doesn't represent us here in Massachusetts. And frankly, it's not something that I would want our children to be, to have flying over their schools. And it shouldn't be flying over government buildings. So I'm just hoping that Town Meeting Members will vote in support of this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Klaus Becker.
This is Klaus Becker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. I recommend reading the book called The Settling of North America by Alan Taylor, in which he, in great detail, and it's enough to make you cry, describes the plight of the Indians who not only got all sorts of diseases, but they also got pests like cats and new rats and plants that they couldn't eradicate as easily as they would. I mean, it's, it was just, and it all happened at once, right? So the Native Americans suffered dreadfully. And it actually, the whole business about brutality was a small thing. And I don't think we should actually bring it up so much because it's, it was a small part of what happened here. But what is clear is that it, they suffered dreadfully. And the flag isn't particularly old or noteworthy in any way. And here you have Native American leaders asking for it to be changed. Why wouldn't we do this for them? I just don't get it. I'm clearly in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, again. At this time, there are 10 people still in line. Aaron Pickelingus, Elaine Alligood, and Adriana Poole are the first three.
Thank you. Aaron Pickelingus, you're next.
Hello, Aaron Pickelingus, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. I called a previous question.
Mr. Pickelingus is calling the question to end debate. There are nine people in line. Yes, Ellen.
There's actually, Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, there are five people in line.
Well, I think they took their hands down. There were 10 when we introduced Mr. Pickelingus, so. So now we will vote to terminate debate or not. It does take a second, so if somebody wants to raise their hand, yes, there are seconds. So now this takes a two-thirds vote, as you well know. We will open the polls. This will terminate debate. If it passes and we'll turn, we'll go directly to a vote. If it fails, we'll continue the discussion. Just went live on Belmont Media, so we'll wait a few more seconds. Want to make sure everybody votes who wants to vote. All right, let's close the polls and show the tabulation. Final vote is 208 in favor and 41 opposed. So let's scroll the roll. So debate is terminated. 208 to 41. We'll now turn to the main motion under Article 11. And so the poll, so this will be the vote, obviously, in favor or opposed to the motion itself presented by Mr. Bernard. All those in favor would vote yes. Those opposed, no. The polls are open. All those in favor would vote yes. Those opposed, no. The polls are open. Belmont Media is now with us, so, uh, we'll wait a few more seconds before we close the poll. All right, let's close the polls and show the tally, please. So the final vote was 220 in favor, 12 opposed, and 19 abstained. We may have an emergency vote. But we can scroll, we can, uh, scroll the results. All right, thank you, um, Town Clerk.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the Town Clerk. We have one emergency vote on Article 11, a main motion. Paul Roberts, Precinct Eight, votes yes.
So the final tally is 221 in favor, 12 opposed, and 19 abstentions. So thank you very much. Uh, we now turn to Article 12. And Mr. McGaw will make a motion to dismiss Article 12. He was the, this was a citizen's petition, signed by, uh, 10 petitioners or more. And Mr. McGaw represents the petitioners. Mr. McGaw.
Mike, do I have to start my video or does that matter?
I, I, I don't think it matters, Bob. Go ahead.
Okay. Moved that Article 12.
But do, Bob, do introduce yourself though, for the record.
Robert McGaw, Precinct One. Moved that Article 12 be dismissed.
Is there a second? Please raise your hands. Yes, there's a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? Mr. Pinkelengus?
I think that's my previous hand.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Sumner Brown? Were you raising your hand, Sumner? Mr. Brown? No. Adriana Poole? Mr. Brown, are you there?
Hello, Mr. Moderator, Adriana Poole, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I would like, uh, to ask if, uh, we could get a little background on why Mr. McGaw decided to, uh, dismiss the article. Thank you.
Yes, of course. Mr. McGaw?
Robert McGaw, Precinct One. Everyone I talked to said encouraging, uh, public participation was a good idea. And most people do think it makes much more sense if appointed committees let the public speak before the committee votes on a motion rather than afterwards. But when I was informed that the Select Board had voted to recommend unfavorable action on this non-binding resolution, I consulted with town meeting members of my precinct one. And many of them gave me very thoughtful suggestions. And my sense is that it would be wiser to pursue other methods to increase public participation and how committees can help in that process. If members of the public are interested in town issues, I believe we need to cultivate their issue, their interest and enthusiasm and welcome their constructive ideas and constructive criticism. Article 12 was an effort to encourage participation. I hope it at least spurred discussion. I hope the discussion continues. We have much work to do.
Thank you, Mr. McGaw. Sumner Brown?
My hand was raised to try to second something a while ago.
All right, thank you. Paul Roberts?
Paul Roberts, Town Meeting, Precinct Eight. I would actually urge that we not, uh, drop this issue. I think that, uh, the, I, I can appreciate Bob feeling pressure that the Select Board wanted to move against it. But I see that actually as a pattern of behavior by our Select Board to try and stay silent on issues regarding.
Mr. Mr. Roberts is not appropriate. You're beyond to start attacking the Select Board.
Town meeting to, uh, not dismiss this article, to bring it up for a vote and send a message to the Select Board as Mr. McGaw intended.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Michael McNamara.
Um, Michael McNamara, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I just, I just want to ask really quick. Since this seems like a good question in, in Mr. McGaw, I mean, um, Town Meeting Member McGaw made really good points about trying to get more public input. Could the Select Board maybe just mention why they, they opposed it? I'm just, it seemed like it wasn't a minor thing, so just wondering why. That's all.
Mr. Palillo?
Hey, Mr. Moderator, Mark Flochier, the Select Board Town Meeting Member at Large. Think it might be helpful if the Vice Chair speaks as well. We debated this issue at Lent, um, during our prior meetings and we certainly do appreciate Bob McGaw's thoughts on this and in encouraging public participation and the fact that he turned it into a non-binding resolution. We thought that'd create confusion. Uh, we believe that, you know, we can always improve on public participation. Uh, we strongly support that and we as a board will continue to stress to any committee that we appoint. The public participation is so important. We also understand that committees are comprised of residents. Though in fact, residents do have, uh, the ability when they serve on committees to provide input. We were concerned about the confusion that this may create, that, uh, our committees, uh, do yeoman's work, particularly the chairs, and we felt as though it might put additional pressure on them to try to abide by, even though it's a non-binding resolution, whatever this may have read. Very happy to have seen it, uh, turn into a non-binding resolution rather than a bylaw change. And so I've talked to Bob about this as well. Of course, we want public participation, notwithstanding some comments from fellow town meeting members that we don't want to encourage public participation. We do that actively. We, we try to find ways to have the public provide input. We have comments, uh, from town, from town residents during our board meetings. And we're, we're going to work more closely with chairs of committees and with committees to ensure that there is enhanced public participation. Uh, we're also looking at from a technology perspective, the ability to set up, uh, inboxes for particular committees so that chairs of committees can monitor those inboxes. It's a really difficult issue. Uh, it's not perfect. None of us are perfect. But certainly we support public participation, participation. So would ask the Vice Chair to comment as well. Thank you.
Mr. Dash?
Thank you. Adam Dash, Vice Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. Yeah, I want to thank Mr. McGaw for, for bringing up the topic and having a chance to discuss it. And, and also I understand his intentions and I, it did get changed over time. However, I was opposed to it for several reasons. One is that oftentimes, you know, our meeting, this was talked about as being something regarding transparency and it's really not about transparency because transparency is how our meetings are all televised and everyone can watch. We don't do anything behind the bolt, behind the scenes. We talk only when we're in public meetings. So we aren't, and actually during COVID, we've been nothing but transparent on every committee because everybody's been, uh, on Zoom and people can log in at an unprecedented level. Uh, the Select Board and the Town Administration have been working to keep that going. Uh, July 15th is when the open meeting law emergency order expires and we'll have to go back in person to have our committee meetings. And we are looking, uh, to make sure that we can still have the public participate remotely, even though we have to go, uh, to the room in person at that time. So we are committed fully to transparency and having people involved. We've, one of the things, one of the reasons why we want to keep Zoom going is we've never had this many people show up and speak at our meetings before. I should note that Mr. McGaw's amendment only, uh, motion, I'm sorry, article only applies to appointed boards, not elected boards. This actually has nothing to do with the Select Board. But for all those folks who volunteer their time on committees, uh, I felt it was a problem to have the micromanaging how they run the meetings to allow the chairs and the committees to operate, um, as they feel they need to operate. I can tell you that there hasn't been much of a problem that it's certainly, if there's been an issue, as Mr. McGaw described, it's been very rare. I would note that a lot of times I've been to, whether it's the Transportation Advisory Committee on Concord Avenue or the Recreation Commission meetings on the tennis courts, that when they've had a lot of public interest, they've had separate set aside meetings just for public input because they want to give the issues the respect it deserves. And then they will meet later without public input to discuss amongst themselves and vote. I, I would think this article would then require them to have public input at the meeting to discuss the forum on the public input, which was the whole point of having the forum. So I think at some point it just gives up, uh, some people who don't like the way the committee may be going to filibuster the committee and just keep speaking, uh, to keep them from voting. Uh, and then if they vote, go vote goes the wrong way and people aren't allowed to talk, then this gives them some leg to, um, challenge the ruling of the vote of the committee, uh, rather because it didn't follow the intent, whatever the intent of town meeting may be. I thought it is, it is confusing and it could cause some trouble. I would note that the Attorney General's Office does have guidelines and guidance that they've issued to committees in various cities and towns on how to run meetings and allow public participation. And I fully encourage it, but just don't think it should be an article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dash. Seeing no other hands raised, we will go to a vote. Oh, I just, oh, Miss Finley, Judith, I didn't see yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Judith Finley, Precinct Six. I think all the things that have been said are very good, but I would note that there are an awful lot of people who feel as though their views are not included and perceptions are extremely important. So I would hope that some effort will be made to find ways to, more ways to improve, um, participation before votes are taken in the hope that this negative attitude will change. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing, oh, no, that's, I don't see any other hands. Do you, Ellen? Mr. Palillo?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I hate to, um, sort of continue here. Mark Falillo, uh, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. I just wanted to say that Judith, you have my full commitment, Judith, that we will continue to look for ways to improve communication. It, it saddens me to hear, frankly, it does, when I hear from folks that they feel as though they have not been listened to. I think, um, we all can do a better job of keeping our ears open and, and serving our residents. And so you have my commitment on behalf of the Select Board that will do that. And you have my commitment as well that I will continue to talk to Bob and others in town around how we can improve or at least create a situation where folks feel as though they have been heard and public participation has been enhanced. Um, this is not the end of this debate. It's just the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Anderson.
Good evening, Bill Anderson, Precinct Two. Uh, Mr. Palillo may have addressed some of my commentary a little bit. I, uh, for one, have been, uh, attending very, uh, you know, a, a number of boards, meetings of boards, committees and subcommittees over the last couple of years and, opportunity to speak, ask questions, ask for clarification, um, simple questions, complex questions. You know, I've gotten very, um, mixed results depending on the committee or subcommittee or board. Uh, there have been times when, uh, the, uh, simple presence at the meeting, uh, has been enough to, we asked me if I have any comments. And then the other end of the spectrum is those where I may have raised my hand, had it raised for quite some time. And the meeting was abruptly ended by, uh, the chair without even a roll call vote or a vote to, to adjourn. So, um, I don't know if this is a proper subject for an article or not, but I would ask, uh, if it's appropriate now, what would be the appropriate, uh, venue or vehicle? And if that's not appropriate for now, maybe we simply take it up as Mr. Palillo suggested. And thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Anderson. This would not be the appropriate vehicle, but I'm sure it will be, uh, picked up by the Select Board. Uh, Ji Yun Wong?
Uh, Ji Yun Wong, Precinct Eight. In some ways, having this discussion, um, is fulfilling some of the desires that, uh, Mr. McGaw had for us having this conversation. So thank you for, um, bringing this up. And I do agree that perception is so important. Um, it's hard enough to, uh, step up and speak up, you know? It can be nerve wracking and it can be also time consuming if you're trying to email in and, and, um, share your opinion. Um, so perception is really important. The sense that, oh yes, I'm being heard, even if I'm not a town meeting member, even if I'm not, um, someone that, um, is well connected, to be able to get a sense that they're being heard. I think that one, um, easy, uh, well, maybe not too easy, but one important, uh, way to have that happen is um, a commitment that any emails that are sent, um, that there's a response. I can imagine that certain committees, um, are getting many emails perhaps on a certain topic and it may be hard to do, um, but in general that, um, there's a commitment to have, to respond, um, even briefly to any emails with opinions. I think that, um, will go a long way. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, we'll go to a vote on the motion to dismiss under Article 12. So the motion to dismiss, uh, the polls are open. All those in favor of the motion? Vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. So Belmont Media is now with us on the voting. We'll wait a few more seconds. All right, let's close the polls. So the motion to dismiss, 218 in favor, 21 opposed, 12 abstained. Ellen?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, Town Clerk. On, uh, Article 12, the motion to dismiss, uh, Paul Roberts, Precinct Eight, votes no.
So we'll scroll this and then announce the final tally. So we'll scroll this and then announce the final tally. So the final tally is 218 in favor, 22 opposed, and 12 abstains. So obviously, the motion to dismiss prevails. And now we will have the motion to adjourn the meeting. I'll read this. Move that the annual Town Meeting be adjourned and continued to 6:30 PM Wednesday, June 1, 2022. And we will do that, as I announced earlier, virtually. So I will take unanimous consent for this motion. Thank you all. I think it's been a very good Segment A of Town Meeting. We look forward to picking up on Segment B, the financial articles, on June 1. So that will be the end of this meeting. Thank you all.